Oh, absolutely. That would be great.
Okay.
We were actually thinking about all the other things that we do that are cost-saving now, so I'll bring up more stuff to you as time goes on.
That's good. I mean, it's great for people to think that way.
Absolutely. And the map program is pretty important, too, because we're taking machines that we otherwise would recycle and giving them to kids who don't have any computers. So that's the other good part about all of this is we're still finding uses for these machines.
Yeah, they're not just getting dumped.
Absolutely. No, that's great.
Hey, John. I was just dealing with Denise. Well, oh my God. Well, I was just texting with Denise about can you pick them up from baseball if they get us? Like, I don't tell her, I forgot to tell her I'm here tonight, but um.
Gene's taken his jacket. They're there in the same session. Gene can bring Peter back.
Okay. Okay, yeah.
What time is Peter supposed to be there?
What's the, I don't even know if they're in East Brunswick or uh, or West Brunswick. I was just, oh, okay, yeah, thanks. I was just talking about baseball and I have no idea of my kid.
I don't know.
Is he doing Baybrook?
I don't know. Can Frankie help you? Frankie, can you help you?
Not yet.
Okay, he's in charge of it.
Oh, is this Baybrook?
Yeah.
Oh, did Jack may play Baybrook?
Yeah.
That's, well, because I'm trying to keep it one oh, I'm not going to know anybody. Da-da-da, I don't really know them that well, either.
Oh, scary.
He was talking about it. I mean.
Well, how old price it comes. I think the sooner the better, critical mass.
We need to get 12 players, but that would teach me a year in Princeton.
The map of those that are all over the west winter and the city that's close this year is to have a satellite team based on the square of our president's. Yes, so that's the idea, but we need to get the 12 players. We've got enough to have some other.
How many, how many do you have right now? So 10 and 11. Is it called Christie?
I'm emailing him a lot. Carl, I'll apparently gave Carl a choice.
Of life or baseball?
No. Playing either club baseball for Gallagher or football. I guess it's huge.
School ball in Baybrook, no club.
I think he's had the worst football in Baybrook.
Football, baseball.
But all, you know, almost all of Jack's buddies.
Okay, I'm working on Peter. I'm working on Peter. It's just he.
When he gets to 12 to 15 players, he'll have a team that's small here.
Okay. Okay, maybe I'll just tell Denise we're signing him up.
Just to find Jack, I mean, it's going to be like, really.
Okay.
It's not like, well, more major than a regret for you, it's the next problem. They're just such a reliable rate. It's just like, oh, you know, if they just announce they're going to do 15 instead of 11. We're recording it. And he's going to have to delay it. It's all about. See if he plays a basketball player. Those are during the day. It's actually the winter try season.
Welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The board is an elected unpaid group of 10 citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial, and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We're always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The board and the school district operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting, as you may know, contains three opportunities for those attending to comment on items in the published agenda or on other matters of interest to the public. The board reserves the right to limit the time allotted to public participation, and law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We hope that our meetings provide useful opportunities for communication between the board and the community, so thank you for attending. And with that, Ms. Kennedy, would you please call the roll? Here.
Betsy Calvert-Baglio.
Here.
Beth Baron.
Here.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Here.
Jessica Deutsch.
Here.
Bill Hare.
Here.
Daphna Kendall. Greg Stankowitz.
Here.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder.
Here.
Evelyn Spahn.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we move to item D, the adoption of the minutes, and we have two minutes for adoption tonight. The first, the meeting on January 23rd, 2018, and the second for our meeting on February 7th, 2018, and those are separate votes. So can we start with D1? Can I have a motion for the adoption of the January 23rd minutes? Jess, and a second, Debbie? And we're voting electronically on this.
Okay, maybe I'm not right then.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, here we go.
If I'm not.
Tell me when you're done. Okay, and now, and now we need a motion for D2, the February 7th minutes. Betsy, and a second, Beth. Yeah. All set? Not yet. Okay.
Oh, sorry. I'm trying to multitask.
Okay. So tonight, we're going to change slightly the order of the agenda, and given the events of the past couple of weeks nationally, that we thought it would make sense for both me and for the superintendent Steve Cochran to speak first a little bit before the first public comment session. And again, that first public comment is open to any topic at all for members of the public, limited to 15 minutes. But again, we're just going to switch it up slightly. I won't take long. Steve might take longer, but we'll see about that. But just a couple of things that I wanted to point out tonight. Number one, in with respect to our district, again, we're seeing every month great things happening. We've made a lot of progress in the last month on the referendum. Well, you'll hear more about that tonight, but you, we're pulling together a lot of information from a lot of different sources, hearing a lot of voices in the community, and we're very excited to what we're going to be seeing over the next four, five weeks from our architects and from the different constituencies who is, who's pulling together to think about the future of our, of our school and how we best house and educate our, our children when they're in our custody and care. And with respect to the custody and care of children, we, the board, thought it was important tonight, given events in Florida in the last week, to make a statement about school safety. And so we crafted this together, and I don't like to read things, but I will read this because it's, reflects the views of everyone on this board. "The Princeton Board of Education offers its deepest condolences to the students, staff, and families of Parkland, Florida. No community should have to grieve the senseless loss of its children. Like Parkland and all communities across the nation, Princeton is one that places the highest value on the health and welfare of its children. We want what every parent, teacher, and administrator wants, a safe and secure learning environment for our children. As a school board, there are actions we can take and will take to ensure that our children are as safe as they can be when they are in our buildings. But nothing that a board of education can do will address the fundamental factor in this epidemic of gun violence and mass shootings, the prevalence of automatic weapons that are too easily procured and have no purpose other than to cause mass injury and death. As school board officials who represent our community, we call tonight on those elected officials who have the power at the state and local level to step up and to make changes and to pass sensible legislation that prioritizes our student's safety in our schools over the desire of a few to own these dangerous weapons. This board has the will to keep our children safe, but not the power. We call on those tonight who have the power to find the will. As stewards of our most precious resource, our children, who are the future of this state and of this country, we believe that school boards and school districts can remain silent no more. We applaud the efforts of students in our district and throughout the country in calling for change. It is time for all of us to stand up, and we call upon the officials who can make a difference to act now to protect our children. We're addressing these officials directly with hope and respect, and we will ensure that they receive a copy of this resolution along with the New Jersey School Boards Association, which has also asked, asked to be informed of New Jersey School Boards' efforts with respect to the issue of gun and school safety. And we will address this resolution to President Donald J. Trump, Governor Philip Murphy, Senator Cory Booker, Senator Robert Menendez, Representative Bonnie Watson Coleman, State Senator Christopher Bateman, State Senator Linda Greenstein, Assemblyman Andrew Zwickler, Assemblyman Daniel Benson, and Assemblyman Wayne D'Angelo." So that is our statement with respect to school safety. Steve will have more about it later, and I think also in terms of what we'd like to do at the end of the session tonight is pass this as a formal resolution of the board. And with that, I will turn it over to you, Steve, and I think your presentation is going to have sort of a part now, and then we'll turn to public comments.
Sure.
And then finish your, the rest of your comments.
Thank you, Pat, and good evening, everyone. I really want to thank Pat and the board for their strong statements in support of our students and.
In support of their safety, I'd like to take a moment just to add my voice to theirs and to those of our young people. All of the students in our schools were born after 1999, the year of the school shooting in Columbine. Since that time, there have been 170 school shootings across America. Our students have grown up with that reality. Each month, they dutifully endure lockdown and intruder drills. We have infused their lives with a wariness for their own safety that they should not have. I recognize that gun control is a complex and a politically charged issue, but the safety of our children is not. The safety of our children should be simple, and it should be a priority that spans all political affiliations. And so tonight, I ask simply this, that our lawmakers show the courage to propose and pass legislation that balances the protection of the Second Amendment with the protection of our kids. As a country, we can do this. The student survivors from the shooting in Parkland made clear to us that condolences without action are empty, and so I respectfully join my voice with theirs in asking for action now. Thank you.
Can I go on?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
The logical next question may be what, what actions have we taken here in Princeton? And I want to spend just a minute talking about that. We actually began the, the process of taking action in early January, well before the tragedy in Florida, when Lou Goldstein, our Assistant Superintendent and Emergency Management Coordinator, organized security audits for all of our schools. So administrators joined Lou and representatives of our police department in walking through all of our buildings and in making recommendations to add security cameras, to expand the reach of our public address systems, to change protocols K through 12 for how people enter our buildings. At Princeton High School, for example, and I've communicated this to the community at large, students may now enter only through the tower entrance and the pack entrance where we will have additional security personnel. All other doors are locked. Visitors to the high school will only enter through the tower entrance and must sign in. The facilities committee met yesterday with Police Chief Sutter and members of his team to talk through additional measures, and those include, at this point, walkthroughs of each of our schools by police over an upcoming weekend when no one is in the building so that they can, they become familiar with the distinct layout of each of our buildings. The purchase of software known as collaborative response graphics, this is actually on the agenda for tonight, and Daphna Kendall may say more about this, but the software produces a 3D image of the schematics of each of our buildings, which can be rotated to see all floors and all angles. In addition, the officers or first responders to a crisis in one of our schools would be visible on that software through a device which they would carry on their person. So administrators, officers who are coordinating the response would be able to see exactly on their computers, on their iPhone, on their iPad, where in the building the officers were moving and could direct them accordingly. As I said, the, the purchase of this software is on the, the agenda tonight. And finally, the police department and the school administrators will be syncing their respective radios so that in a crisis in one of our buildings, we can communicate on a common channel. Some of these small things can make a big difference, save valuable seconds or minutes in a time of crisis. I just, I want to say how incredibly grateful I am for the open and responsive relationship we have with our police department, and I know we will be continuing to develop ways that will partner, that we will partner in the protection of our students. I also want to mention, I don't know if you can pull up the slide quickly, Gabe, or not, but I want to mention that safety and security has always been a major part of our referendum design. The plan is to ensure that the main entrances to all of our schools are renovated to be both welcoming and secure. Here's a slide from our architect's presentation showing the placement of the secure entryway at the high school. So as you can see, once you get through that main secure entry in red, you know, where you sign in and there are barriers so that no one can come in without a security person welcoming them and having them sign in with an ID, and then once you get in, you're welcomed with a cup of coffee at the coffee bar as part of the design. Oh, says our business administrator. So I actually can talk more about the referendum in a minute or two, but I think it may be a good time to, to stop and break for public comment, and then we can come back to talking about the referendum. Thank you, Gabe. So I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, thanks, Steve. So again, this is typically a time that we allow public comment on any topic at all. It's limited to about 15 minutes, so if anybody would like to come to the microphone now and make a statement, again, not intended to be a cross-exam of the board members, but more a time for members of the public to make a statement to the board and the community. And if you can just be mindful of how many people you think are behind you so that you're not taking up too much time, we won't limit you in a formal way, but just be mindful of your time limits. And I ask if you come up, if you just identify yourself and where you live. So if we have any takers for that, sure, come on up.
Hello, my name is Kristen Swazo, and I'm a resident of the Riverside area. I have two young children at Riverside School. First of all, I want to thank you so much for the statement that you all just made. It's very timely and very in aligned with what I know many of the parents at Riverside are thinking of, and thank you for all the steps you're taking to increase school safety just broadly. So I think this is just fantastic. After the incident in Parkland, each and every one of us, I think, feels very passionately about the ultimate goal that we all desire of offering a safe space for our students as we hand them over to you all in our schools. We want to be confident that they are safe and that they are protected. And that is something that, like mentioned, I believe we can all agree on across whatever spectrum, whatever opinions we have on the issue of the Second Amendment and so forth. Recently, over the last couple of days, I have heard, though, that the board is considering or has been requested, I don't know all the details, but have actual armed officers in our schools each and every day. My thoughts aren't completely well put together on this. I haven't had time to read every evidence-based article on this topic, which I would normally prefer to do before coming up, but having heard that this is under consideration by the members of the board, I thought it was important to sort of come before you and speak a point of view that I know I hold very strongly, and I know many, many people in the community hold very strongly as well. In short, I'm not going to mince words. I believe this is a terrible idea. I think it will make our schools less safe. It will lead to more possible gun accidents across the community and create a climate of amongst the schools and with the students of less safety in the schools as well. I know for certain that I am not alone in this point of view, having had many conversations. I had just met today with about 20 or so parents in Riverside who are trying to come together to develop an action plan to address the, the challenge of gun violence in our community as well as more broadly. So there is a group being formed, and this is one of the topics that honestly I have not heard one person in alignment with the idea of actual armed officers in the school. I do not believe an armed off, resource officer would serve as a deterrent to someone with an AR-15 that can fire off approximately 30 rounds in a minute or so. I don't think that would deter, having an armed resource officer would deter someone like that from coming into the schools and inflicting violence. A handgun that a resource officer would be carrying is really no match against an AR-15. And did it work at Stoneman Douglas High School? No. They had an armed resource officer there on staff, present in the area, and it, it made no difference at all. So what I'm actually asking the board and urging the board and the district is to focus on the end goal of what we're all really trying to achieve. Ultimately, what's the end goal? Having safer schools. And I believe a lot of these steps that have already been outlined are really getting us along that path, and I'm very supportive of them. I would ask the board to then, having aligning, aligning on the goal, to then systematically, strategically, and thoughtfully map out a plan of action to get there, rather than just immediately jumping to an armed solution in the schools. This would end up being, I believe, a highly controversial action, and I would recommend that the board engage in a community discussions, hold public hearings, but ultimately remain faithful to the end goal of safer schools, not necessarily armed schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rod Montgomery from William Patterson Court, curmudgeon taxpayer. I was going to save this to the end, but I'd actually like you to be thinking about it as you communicate with your constituency and the public this evening. This is a matter that I thank Ms. Bronfeld for helping me understand when I raised it in an email blast that I inflicted upon the board about, you, you have many push channels through which you push information out to the public. This is one of them. The public meetings archived and, and usually livestreamed, I guess not tonight. You have presentations at committees and emails to parents, but you don't have very much in the way of resources that people can pull, from which people can pull information. You do have the archived videos of board meetings, but if there's a presentation in the middle of a board meeting about, for example, the high school start time changes, what do you expect? That the public is going to read, watch through the whole meeting to get that one little morsel? Probably not. The same goes for expanding and improving the building space. I was able to find in the board docs library a few PDFs pertaining to the referendum, but nothing, for example, that would constitute grounds for rebuttal to the letter to the editor of the Planet Princeton about, oh, open plan schools were tried and they didn't work, and why are you going back to this crazy, old, failed concept? Concerning the school start times, I actually found nothing at all. My own Googling found an article about experience in another district, which district found that disadvantaged students benefited most from the change in the start time, which would address the district objective of reducing the gaps. Thank you for your attention, and thank you for your hard work on behalf of Princeton students.
Thank you. All good comments. Appreciate them. Sure, come on up.
I, someone said to me that, that what's happening with this, I'm sorry, Mary Clerman, I live on Harris Road right over here. One of my neighbors said that she was concerned that the, the students at the high school, for instance, were having to line up at the tower entrance and that there was a great crowd of them doing that, and I'm wondering whether that's true and if they're not perhaps sitting ducks in that situation.
No, not to my knowledge. They can, they can come in both the tower entrance and the pack entrance and.
So do they flow in easily? Is that what happens, or is there a crowd?
Seems to be working well as far as I know.
Okay, that's good to hear.
Yeah.
Okay, and the other thing is, I had also been told, I think this morning, that, or yesterday, that the students are organizing a walkout. Are you aware of that? And is the school?
Sure.
Yeah, so is that something that's going to be publicized to the town? Are you going to ask for support from other organizations or from the public? Are the students doing that kind of thing?
We're still, we're still in the process of planning that. We have a number of student organizers who are working with the administration to figure out how best to, to put that forward, but the, the school is supporting our, our students in their, their desire to gather peaceably and, and to be engaged citizens, so we're, we're working with them.
Let, let people know if you'd like parents or citizens, adults. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public at this time?
My name is Marlon Ayadele. I live at 469 Ewing Street. My concern this evening is in regards to the children of color in the district, when they experience any type of racial bias by a staff member or a teacher. I ask that you all consider having some type of mechanism for students to be able to talk with someone in their school to report this, a mechanism to track so that the district is aware of what the students are experiencing, and to provide some sort of a therapist or someone that will help support their student when they have to endure these sort of situations because it's the, it really does affect them when it comes from someone that. comes from someone that is, you know, of authority, someone that is supposed to be there to teach them and to nurture them, and it does have an impact on the students, and they have to learn how to deal with the emotions that go along with all of that. And that is it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please note that we are considering all of those options you just mentioned.
Hi, my name is Christian Martin. I'm a student at the high school. I just wanted to note, because the walkout was mentioned, that I believe any well-rounded education would teach our students not just to be passive citizens, but to be vocal ones and ones who actively work to seek change in their community and their country. And I was at a meeting with Mr. Snyder today, and he talked about how he gets, faces criticism for either supporting the walkout or not supporting the walkout, and I would just hope that the school board would see the benefits and see actually how amazing it is, I think, that we have such vocal and passionate and active students who obviously want to actually work and make a difference. I would hope that the school board would actively work to support such efforts and maybe even take this as an opportunity to pursue further education on the importance of activism, the importance of standing up and talking about what we believe in and fighting and actually working to make change. Because I think nationally, we're seeing the dialogue shift. We're seeing an appreciation for the empowerment and for the abilities of our high schoolers to get involved and to have their voices be heard. And I know that it's something that, high schoolers are known for their apathy, and I'd say that while we're finally seeing high schoolers who obviously want to get out there, I would hope the school board would be supportive of that.
And they are. Thank you, Christian.
Okay, thank you, Christian. Anyone else at this time? All right, if there's no other takers, then we're going to split this up a little bit, but Mr. Cochran still had a few more things to talk about in his superintendent's report.
Yeah, can you bring up the rest of the superintendent's report, Gabe, please? So I left us with the slide showing getting into the high school, and this is probably a good point to transition into talking a little bit about the referendum. So we had a team of architects who was here visiting us two weeks ago for what they call the design and visioning visit. That visit continued meetings with staff, with board members, and also with community members who had interest and expertise in a wide range of topics: athletics, sustainability, the historical significance of some of the buildings in our community as well as the community needs that we could be addressing. Key to this visit, which was their second visit, was also meetings with students at all of our schools. So this is a shot of one of those meetings. They made it to every single one of our schools, elementary, middle school, and high school. Here are some of our students' ideas, and I think it's important that we think about the process that we're undertaking as one that is wide open and that is seeking input from all stakeholders, including our youngest. And so here are some of their thoughts, and I'll just let you absorb these. So we, those administrators and staff who saw some of these comments, and there are a few others, were inspired by them. Schools should be like museums. They should be places where kids are curators of their own learning and can demonstrate their own understanding. They should be places like science museums that are hands-on and messy, where kids can build and experiment and create. And we should have decent toilet paper as well. Here's some other ideas. And the architects are considering a rooftop garden, perhaps with a slide, I don't know. The more spaces for hands-on activities. Not sure about the llama farm, but some of these ideas are ones that the architects took to heart. And the bottom line for me is, I really pored through the ideas of our kids, is that, you know, our students are looking for a variety of learning spaces. Some that are open and engaging, where they can build and experiment and collaborate with classmates. Some that are quiet and secure, and places for reflection, like the child who wanted to learn underneath his desk. So one of the key takeaways of this visit was really a focus on providing that kind of learning environment for our students, because we know it's how they want to learn, and also providing sort of a flexible learning environment for our teachers, knowing that that's how they want to teach, and it's the way in which our students need to be prepared for the skills they'll need as they move into the world. So we actually tried to create, the architects tried to design these flexible learning spaces within the interior of the high school. So one of the key ideas that was a takeaway from their visit was a shift from an external solution, which would be an addition to the high school, and looking instead at internal transformations of the high school, covering courtyards and recapturing space, so that we can actually expand space at the high school while also creating flexible, more flexible learning environments. So we're looking at a collaborative hub in the middle, a heart of the school, and then these flexible learning zones. Here's an example of what a collaborative hub might look like, where classrooms would pour into this space and it could be used for a display or for presentations. Here's an example of flexible learning zones, and you can see there's large group space, there's smaller space, there's storage, and you see the sort of garage door that moves up, you can see that right at the top. So we are looking at taking the traditional classroom or school design, which is sort of this egg carton approach, hallway with cells on either side of it, and transforming it into what we're calling flexible learning space. And so the only slide, next slide I want to show is really, it's a transformation of this space into what we're looking at as flexible learning space. And because I know that, as Mr. Montgomery mentioned, there were discussions about the open space of the '60s and '70s and how that model doesn't work, I really want to be clear, as were our architects, that we're not talking about an open space model. We're talking about a model that allows for adaptable space and flexible learning. And so there are walls, but those walls can move depending on the need that the teacher might have or the students might have. So it provides us with a great deal more flexibility. It also is a much more efficient use of the space. So hopefully this will play, and you can see how the transformation takes place. They begin by taking out the furniture and then removing the non-supporting walls to create, now this is open space, but it doesn't stop here. This would have been the '60s and '70s, and now you're going to see more walls come in, but at different kinds of walls, and different kinds of furniture that allows for flexible seating and movement, and different activities to take place even in the same space. And so we're looking at small learning communities, and then we're going to dive down and look at learning studios. So that wall can now shift, and now we have two classrooms that could come together for a larger group discussion or interdisciplinary kind of interactions. If we need space to spread out, we lift the doors into the area beyond the classroom, and now kids can collaborate out there. We can shut the classroom walls again and have quieter space, so that there is, there's space, large space, for large groups to come together, and then within each classroom, you also have much smaller spaces for cooperative groups, that a teacher can still observe the students, and you have what the architects refer to as cave spaces. Kind of that kid who wanted to learn under his desk has a place where he or she can go to read a book and just, and feel, you know, secure and independent, but still be observed by the teacher. So we're looking at flexible learning spaces. We're not looking at open classroom. So this is a little bit of a teaser. If you go on our website, you will see the takeaways from the recap that the architects provided us with a long list of the ideas they gained and some of the pictures of their interactions with staff and with students, as well as some of the ideas and design ideas that they have, both for the high school and for the 5-6 school. So I would encourage people to explore that on the district website under referendum information. The architects will be back with us March 13th and 14th. They're working, we have two architect firms, one that's local, one that's primarily out of Michigan, so we're still working with them remotely. The local architect is here on a regular basis, and the team comes together on the 13th and 14th of March, and there will be a presentation for the board on that date for the public and more interaction with our community members, our staff, and also with our students. So now I just, I want to shift a little bit. We have, as a broad district goal, the focus on equity, the focus on ensuring that every single one of our students can achieve their very highest potential without barriers and with supports. And we focus on removing those barriers of bias when they exist, and we actually had a whole staff development day on February 16th, Friday, February 16th, where Marceline DeBose was here, and she talked about implicit bias and removing those barriers. And there's one thing that she said that I thought was useful for all of us to hear, and it was that we can't ultimately think or read our way out of implicit bias. We can't workshop our way out of implicit bias. The only thing we can do is relationship our way out of implicit bias. And I think that focus on relationships with each other is at the core of what we do here in Princeton. It's the foundation of a great school and a great school district. And so I was so pleased when I saw this presentation from our special ed PTO, because it's really about relationships. It's about what we do together to support our kids. It's how we get to know our kids. And certainly when we talk about equity, we're talking about the many diverse learners we have in our district and making sure that they too are addressed without barriers and with supports. And so it's my great pleasure to introduce two good friends, people who have been very supportive of the work done in the district, partners in our goal of achieving equity for all students. So Joan Spindell and Lindsay Cruz want to share a little bit with the board and the community about the work that they are doing and the goals that they have. So it's all yours.
Thank you for making time on your agenda tonight to hear more about the Special Education PTO. My name is Joan Spindell, and I am here with Lindsay Cruz. We are co-chairs of the organization. Before we get started, we wanted to give you a quick bit of history. Eighteen months ago, we became the co-chairs for the organization. Our objective was to re-energize the group, build a board of parent advisors who represented our community, and begin to actively foster a collaborative working relationship across the district, especially with Mickey, Kristen, and Eric. Our goal was to create the space for parents to become more engaged and for us to take on priorities and initiatives where we felt we could make a difference. You'll hear more about those programs in a bit. As you listen to our presentation, we want to emphasize that our work is only as successful as our partnership across the district. Tonight, we hope to deepen that relationship. Tonight, we're going to review our goals and programs. We're going to talk a bit about how we are currently collaborating with Princeton Public School teachers and administrators, and what we believe we could be doing, along with your support, to achieve even greater impact for our children.
So who is the Special Education PTO? We're a district-wide organization where approximately one in five students has a learning or attention issue. We see our role as supporting, advocating for, and giving voice for these families. And our goal is to ensure that all means all, when our mission as a district says, to prepare all students to lead lives of joy and purpose as knowledgeable, creative, and compassionate citizens of a global society. Our existence is required by the state as a special education parent advisory group. We're required by law to meet with the district once a month. However, it does not require a full PTO. So tonight, we're grateful and we thank the board, the PTOC, and all the school staff who have partnered with us to make this so much more than a once-a-month required legal requirement. So we do this in a couple ways. The first is, as a special education PTO, we lead some initiatives that are priorities to our families, and we ask the district to support. And there are also district initiatives where we can mobilize our families to support the district. As Steve and Mickey know, we're willing to roll our sleeves up. We want to collaborate, and we have an army of amazing people willing to help make this happen. And we see our work not in addition to, but perfectly aligned to the goals of the district and to your work as a board, specifically around every child known, closing the achievement gap and the district's focus on equity, as Steve mentioned. But I think we want to be really clear, too, that this is not just about the one in five, but that research shows that so many of the practices and the policies that we advocate for are good for all kids.
We are not a diagnosis-specific organization. While we encourage our parents who have similar challenges to meet and learn from each other, as an organization, our goals were created to support all children of special needs. Our three goals include building community, enhancing communication, and bolstering collaboration among families of children with special education needs, other district parent organizations, teachers, the Princeton School Board, Princeton School Leadership, and the Princeton Special Services Team. So how do we translate these goals into actions? I won't take you through all the programs on this slide, but please let me have a moment to highlight some of our favorites. One example of how we are building community includes our regular parent-to-parent casual meetings, which Bev Schumway, our community outreach lead and Riverside co-liaison, organizes. These meetings are quite popular, as they are scheduled in a local bar and restaurant...
That's not why they're popular. Maybe a little bit.
Maybe a little. ...and offer people an informal setting for sharing challenges and ideas. Another example of how we're building community is just yesterday, Lindsay and I met with Elisa Nira and Melissa Yuriz from the Department of Human Services to better understand how we can engage and support Spanish-speaking parents whose children have special needs. Regarding communication, a big shout-out goes to Kristen Graham, the JW leadership team, and Jenny Bryant, our JW liaison and transition program chair, for helping to get schedules out to children who needed them early, and helping to sponsor a meet-and-greet with parents and aides. This practice will continue this year and expand beyond JW. Jenny is also the creator of the One Page Revolution that's underway to help teachers get to know their students who have IEPs much better. Another shout-out to Julie Chow, our communication lead, who publishes monthly our newsletter to over 1,000 people, and Ann Kieswetter, who works with Brenda and Mickey to make sure information on the website provides value and insight for parents. To help bolster collaboration, Jen Hewson, our CP liaison, is partnering with the district to recommend books that the library can acquire to bring greater awareness about different special needs, and she's partnering with Eric on piloting advocacy programs for elementary students. At the high school, we help support Kristen and Jen Kuntz on their grant for developing an advocacy program for teens with special needs, which includes help from an alumni, Meg Hayden. We are proud of our team and grateful for all the support.
So as we look forward, we first want to thank you as the board, Steve, Mickey, and your team for partnering with us to make all of these things happen, for supporting, encouraging, and making yourselves open for conversations and debate, and really being true partners in the work. And tonight, we want to respectfully share where we think we can continue to do more and build on that momentum. So the first opportunity is to continually design and make decisions and policies through a special education lens from the beginning, instead of retrofitting. And one way we can do that is what you have already been doing with us, which is continue representation of special education parents on every council, interview committee, policy... representation of special education parents on every council, interview committee, policy. It's been incredible, I think, over this year for us to be involved in a lot of that, and we ask that you continue to do that. And the second is to consider implementing universal design for learning across our schools. So for those who don't know what that is, it's a framework that provides all students an equal opportunity to learn, and we can support teachers on providing multiple means of engagement, multiple means of representing content, and multiple ways to express their knowledge. The second opportunity we'd like to highlight is really prioritizing parent trust and partnership to drive better success with our kids, specifically around two areas, transparency and timelines. On transparency, we held a roundtable about a year ago where Steve was gracious enough with his time to sit in a room with parents as they shared, and one parent shared an anecdote that being a parent of a child with an IEP can sometimes feel like the video game Legend of Zelda. If you ask just the right question, in just the right way, to just the right person, a new room opens up. You find out about a program that existed, you find out about a policy that existed that you didn't know. So continuing to push for transparency for parents to know what the process is if you have a child who needs support, how those decisions are made and weighed, what to expect in the process, how long it might take, what you need to know. Without that, it's an equity issue. It's left to the few parents who have the resources and the social networks to learn through friends. The second area is around timeline. I think we've all experienced sort of the hold time on a customer service line, and as the time goes on, you can feel your blood start to boil more than when you first had the question. The number-one thing we're contacted about as a special ed PTO is when a parent can't get to the person that they need or can't get a response as fast as they need it. What we want to be clear of is there is incredible work going on by our staff in schools, and there is often very incredible responsiveness. We obviously hear it when it's reached the point that a parent has reached that level of frustration and they can't get an answer. So what we ask is that we continue to push for consistency around that. Things like having an out-of-office message when it really is a busy time to say, "We're experiencing incredibly high volume right now." You know, "We promise to get back to you within 48 hours, please understand." Or that we acknowledge a parent when they've contacted us. Sometimes it's that the team is actually working really hard behind the scenes to get an answer, but it's a complex question. A parent doesn't know that. So we can even commit to an acknowledgement of, "I got your message, this is really important, we're going to get back to you within 48 days," or 48 days, 48 hours. You know, even if we don't have an answer, we promise we'll circle back with you in 48 minutes.
The third opportunity we see is to continue to live up to our promise and obligation to children and families. While there are many efforts which should be applauded, there are three areas where we see room for development. Number one, mandate that all, and I mean all, teachers read and implement IEPs and provide the right support mechanisms to ensure accommodations are met. We know that case managers meet with teachers and talk about each child's requirements, but we hear all too often from parents that general education teachers, specials and elective teachers, and some special education teachers are not following the IEPs. We need to give all teachers the time and the space to read the documentation and to ask questions. We also need to then support and monitor that the accommodations are being understood and being followed. We understand that taking this action means all levels of leadership, not just special education sees this as their responsibility. The second action we are requesting is that, as a lighthouse district, I know we strive to be the best. Let's also make sure that we are a best-practice benchmark for special education. Realizing this goal requires formally and continually benchmarking our program, curriculum, and support practices against national special education standards, best practices, and parent input. Once we have this data, the third request is to have an understanding of the gaps, document and communicate action plans and timelines to best address the gaps and parent feedback. As a co-chair of this organization, when we hear feedback, it would be so powerful to say that we are leaders in this area, and yes, the gap you are highlighting is known, and there's a plan and a timeline to address it. Last December, when Steve, Annie, and Mickey came to speak with our parents, there were applause when Steve mentioned he had a special education objective as part of his annual goals. We thank the board for heightening the importance and prioritizing equity across all areas, including students who learn differently. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Oh, no, 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 don't go anywhere. We're not done with you. You can't do that.
First of all, thank you for a terrific presentation. We, I can only speak for myself in saying that the more you educate me, the more I can advocate for you. So thank you so much. But I want to ask you about the CP Buddy Program. What is that? And is it being modeled there as a demonstration program? What does it entail?
It's still very early. So we started with high school students because we were fortunate enough to have a PHS alum who runs an organization. She had a learning and attention difference herself, and she started an organization to essentially build the skills in our high school students to understand what it means to have a learning and attention issue, to know what you need to learn well and to be able to advocate for yourself. So I think we, I'm an elementary parent myself, so we as ourselves, we're like, "Why do we have to wait till high school? We want to start building that in our kids as early as possible." So right now, there's nothing being rolled out yet. Jen has been working with Eric to look at what are some of the national models around this, where are programs that we've seen have been done well, and what are the buddy programs that already exist at the school? So we can, if it's an area that you're interested in, one, if there's a concern or a question, we can pass that on, but we can also put Jen in touch with you, because nothing's been rolled out yet, it's still in the sort of design shaping.
Well, I'm asking because back in the 1960s, my elementary school had a buddy program, so I was a buddy. So I know it does work. So that's why I'm excited about it. I think it's a great idea.
That's great. Thank you.
So I have a question. Just a couple of things. One, thank you so much. I mean, it does sound like this provides such a service and a much-needed camaraderie, but a link and a service for parents. And I think all PTOs could learn from your, just the way that you have expanded and the type of work that you're doing. So I applaud you on that front.
Thank you.
Just for my education, you said one out of five students, did you mean one out of five students has an IEP in the school district?
Yeah.
So we're just under 20%, I believe.
Definitely under, like 14%.
Yeah. And then if you include students who have 504s and students who have been unidentified.
Okay. So now, Mickey, don't, okay, so a 504 is not the same as an IEP?
Exactly.
Okay. Sorry, we're all learning here.
It's great. I'm sorry, could you go and just explain what a 504 plan is? Mickey, or Joan, or Lindsay?
Do you want to explain? A 504 plan is an accommodation plan for students who have an identified disability, but the level of significance of the impact on their ability to function in their academic program is not, it doesn't require special education programming, but it does require accommodations in the general education program for the area of disability. I mean, it could be diabetes, it could be other things.
Okay. So then that gets me to my last question, which is, where is the onus on a child that is not receiving their accommodations? Does that, is that on the child? Does the child tell the parent? Does the parent contact the teacher? Like, how does that?
You mean that a child has an IEP?
If a child has an IEP and is meant to get accommodations and does not?
Well, there's a case manager for all students who have, who are classified under special education.
I'm just saying, who raises their hand? Does the child say, "I'm not getting my accommodation"?
Could be all of the above.
They tell their parents?
Exactly. So we're working very hard with our students. One of the other things that we're doing is working with, beginning with our elementary kids, but also middle school and definitely high school on self-advocacy, and helping students understand what they have a right to, what their plan includes, so that if there's something happens, they're not getting an accommodation, they know to advocate for themselves. So go to the case manager, school counselor, parent.
So the one out of five, those are one out of five students with an IEP or a one out of five students that have either an IEP or a 504? Either or?
Well, it could be either or.
Okay.
I want to go back to something about advocacy. One of the things that this district is trying to do and that we've been advocating for is the participation of our children in the IEP meeting. So at the elementary school, it can be as simple as just coming in, saying hello, introducing themselves, and leaving a one-pager that they worked with for their family. As a high school parent, my son actually participates in the entire IEP meeting, advocating for himself. I do meet with his case manager on the phone beforehand in case there's something confidential that I want to discuss, and she weaves it into the conversation. But we are really trying to make sure that we teach our children how to respect their differences and understand what they need to be successful in the community.
Can I take a moment to comment?
Sure.
Sure. So I actually am also a student with a 504 plan, as I have ADD, so I guess I don't really have much else to say, other than I'm really glad that this is happening here and now, and hopefully we can leave something behind to help our students learn better in the future. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Lindsay and Joan, I just want to also thank you and say that one of the things that impressed me so much in the course of research preparing to be on the board was the idea that what's good for students who receive special education services is really good for all of our students. And so to the extent that you've supported that, I want to thank you because it makes our district better for all of our kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'd like to join the chorus of thanking Lindsay and Joan for all of your work. Daphne and I heard a lot of this before, and I think this is a really important presentation that you gave tonight, it's really a roadmap. We respect Mickey so much and all the hard work she does in her whole department, but we're always working on getting better and being more effective and everything, and everything that we want to do to make things better for kids. And this is really a roadmap for what needs to be done to change. So it just feels to me, as a special education parent, that you hit on so many things that we need to focus on. So we appreciate, very timely that you're here tonight, and we really appreciate all of your work. And I would just point out, too, that one of the things that you mentioned about how to figure out the system, and you mentioned it was like the Zelda game, and Mr. Montgomery's comment about how to find information, I think, you know, in the future, if it's not in the present, you know, there will be a specialization for UI experts, you know, user interface, how you navigate, not just software, but anything, right? A bureaucracy, a company, you know, whatever it is, a car, how your car, I think the UI in cars is getting worse and worse. But, you know, there aren't enough experts who know how to do this, but just a comment for the board, it comes up over and over again. I talked to a parent this morning, talking about how you, how do you raise a complaint? How does it go through the system? And does everyone know that? And they probably don't. And so we should think about that holistically, because you feel it as a special education parent, but other people feel it too, that we don't, and it's not that we're bad, it's just that we all have to be better at user interface and making sure that parents and students know how to get what they need and know how to find the things that they need. It's not obvious all the time. So appreciate you for flagging that as well. But this was a terrific report, and we should come back to it and see how we did in a year, because this is what we should be doing.
Thank you. So I just wanted to thank you, as a special education parent, for using your position to advocate for all children. And I realize it's 8:30, is it 8:30? 8:30, and one of you works in New York City. And so as a special education parent, I'm very grateful for your very respectful and thoughtful presentation. So, thanks.
Thank you very much.
And for all that you do for the district, I'm not sure if all the board members know, but there are many, many meetings that Lindsay and/or Joan come to, search committee meetings, all kinds of different planning meetings, student achievement. We just really appreciate what you bring to this district. Thank you.
Thank you. And just our thanks in return, because this is a very nice one, is just to thank Mickey and her team for being so available for conversations, and Steve as well. And it was very nice of you to say that we give time, but we have an incredible board of more parents like us that know what it's like to navigate and are willing to put the time in and take the initiative. So we just want to thank you all and thank them as well. They couldn't be here tonight, but they are often in all of the other places.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Part of your presentation designed decisions and policies through a special ed lens. You heard discussion about a safety resource officer, I think is the term, in the schools? Does that hit the special ed PTO in any particular special lens, different lens? I mean, how should that be viewed?
I would say yes. I don't actually know. We could engage other parents, but there was actually, there was something after Parkland that was shown about one of the autistic students in the school, and sort of what that experience felt like to be in lockdown. So I would not profess to be an expert in that, but we would love to have voice and thought around that, maybe particularly one of our parents who have more sort of sensory and other challenges with their child. And I certainly think it's worth researching, if we were going to do anything like that, how do we need to explain, communicate some more?
Actually, if I can build on that, I got an email last night from a teacher who had seen that segment regarding the student at Parkland, wrote to me and suggested that our police officers perhaps could meet with students, get to know them, talk through procedures. So I messaged Chief Sutter last night around 9 o'clock. He got back to me right away and said it was a wonderful idea, and he'd like to set that up as soon as possible. So we're moving forward on those, and I join in thanking you for all your efforts to make us better.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for making the time.
Thank you.
Okay, so Steve, does that conclude the superintendent's report? Or is there some more? Okay. Well, so I just, I didn't want to interrupt you at the time, but I just reiterate, because I've heard it too, about the idea of open classrooms, which I lived through in the 70s. And, you know, that was one of the first questions that we asked the architects, is, "Oh, isn't this like the 70s? And, you know, what happens when the philosophy changes again? How's the building going to change?" And they had a really good response to that, which is, "No, no, this building changes as your needs change." So it's, the space is flexible enough so that if you want to have a big classroom, you can have it. If you're not using a big classroom that day, you can, in effect, cut it up without having another bond referendum. So, you know, it's a very wise, I think, and flexible design. It's sort of the opposite of, you know, sort of carving in stone and then having to use a building in a very inflexible way. So, you know, I've heard those kind of questions, too. And I just wanted to reiterate that.
How do we make sure, though, that people who may not be, well, they can't watch, this is not being streamed, but...
It will be, it'll be shown later.
Right. But who aren't going to sit through an entire board meeting, how do we make sure that we respond? Because I think what Mr. Montgomery's point was, it was great, while we were, I was looking at our website, and there is no way for the person who just says, "I've got a minute, let me go to the website and see what I can find out," to find out anything. And I know there's a lot of moving parts, and we're kind of in motion, but what happens, I think, is that when people write letters to the newspaper and raise these issues, then what gets stuck in people's head is, "Oh, it's going to be a 1970s classroom," and I remember my head felt like it was going to blow up, because, you know, of all the... So I'm just wondering, just in terms of how we communicate and respond to some of these things.
So first of all, on the website now, on the main page of the website, there is a link called "Adaptable Spaces" regarding the referendum. And anyone clicking there will see a direct response to the question about the open spaces of the 60s versus what we're talking about here, which is adaptable, flexible spaces. And there's also a link to a resource, a paper that actually explains that in greater detail. So that's one piece of information that we have easily accessible on the website. And we're looking to get more information out, we're developing an FAQ right now. So we've generated a list of, among certain members of the board have come back and said, "These are the questions we're hearing." So we have a list of probably 30 or 40 questions, and we're trying to prioritize and develop answers for those, so that we can post an FAQ and... and develop answers for those so that we can post an FAQ and direct people to that. So, we're moving forward.
As long as we can make sure that not only is it on our website, that we're proactive as opposed to just being reactive, that we get our friends in the press to publish some of those and, and just to make sure that, that we're getting out there and telling people as opposed to asking them to look for it.
Yep.
We don't have any friends in the press, Michelle.
Yeah.
Just kidding, folks, just kidding. Okay. No, that's a really good point, and it gets back to the UI thing about communication. I think we need to do a better job, and we will. Frequently ask questions. You know, we're in a spot now in this referendum where the designers are off designing, but when it comes back, people need to understand what we're seeing and, and have a chance to give input and feedback.
Right.
You know, some people have had the opportunity to do that, but we have to make it as broad as possible. And also, as you say, when people put a question out there that's sort of misinformed, to somehow respond to that and get the, you know, get the facts out in real time. Okay. So, let's just move on then. So, we are on item H, which is the harassment intimidation bullying report. Now, remember, for our members of the public, we, we try not to vote on as many items as possible and do it all at once in, in one item, and this is a consent item. So, we just need to open, open the item, correct? And then, motion of the second, but we won't do a vote until the end, and that will save a lot of time.
We actually don't open our seconds. We don't.
No motion or a second. We can just move on.
Just talk about it.
Okay. So, yeah, any questions or comments on the harassment intimidation bullying report? Probably not, I assume, right? And with that, we move to item I, which is our board committee reports. And we, and we, and Amy, no, there she is. She's back. And that's, and we'll start with number one, our student board members' report, and that's with Amy Wang and Brian Lu.
All right. So, hello to all of you once again. And yet another month has come and passed, and with it, another fun round of midterms here at Princeton High School. So, accordingly, we wanted to gauge how students felt about their testing experiences, and we released the survey not too long afterwards. We were able to collect exactly 472 responses, with over sixty percent of them coming from our current lowerclassmen, that being sophores and freshmen.
All right. So, of the first questions on the survey, one was asking whether students, what students believe should be done about midterm exams. So, thirty percent supported replacing midterm exams with projects. Twenty-one percent wanted the midterm and final categories to be removed altogether. Twenty-nine percent were in favor of weighting the midterm and final exam categories less within the gradebooks. And this happens to be a practice that most closely resembles what is in place in West Windsor Plainsboro Public Schools. Notably, only nineteen percent of students believe that midterm and final exams should be kept as they are. And during the student achievement committee meeting where we brought these results up, the possibility of weighting exams, weighting cumulative exams less and replacing midterms and finals with quarterly exams was also suggested.
So, when asked how students, when asked how stressful students found midterms on a scale of one to five, with higher numbers indicating a greater amount of stress, sixty-seven percent of students reported a score of four or five, whereas only ten percent of students reported a one or a two. This suggests that many students do in fact find the nature of these exams very stressful and could be incredibly taxing on the overall mental wellness of our student body. So, we also asked whether or not students believe their midterm or final grades accurately reflect their knowledge of the subject, with fifty-eight percent reporting that it didn't, twenty-one percent of students said they weren't sure regarding the matter, and another twenty-one percent of students indicated that their grades did in fact represent how well they knew the course material. So, lastly, in terms of the exams that we found, which gave the students the highest amount of stress, math led at thirty-six percent, followed by science at thirty-four percent, and then history and English both tied at ten percent, and with all other exams falling under other miscellaneous categories, such as electives, university courses, foreign languages, all being below ten percent.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt your break. Could you say that again, because I missed it? So, starting at math, how...
So, math, thirty-six percent. Science, thirty-four percent. History and English each sat at around ten percent, and every other category was, every other like vote option was under ten percent.
Okay, thank you.
So, you can think of it as an other category, I guess. All right. So, lastly, we asked whether or not students believe that their midterm or final grades, whether or not it brought their grades up or down. And forty-eight percent of students said it brought their overall grade down. Twenty-six percent of students said it did not significantly affect their grades. Fifteen percent of students were not sure, and only eleven percent of students believed that midterm exams brought their grades up. We did find a few other interesting trends upon closer inspection of the data. For one, we found that those, of those who wanted midterms replaced with projects, we found they often tended to find math and science the most stressful midterms, with over eighty percent of that population citing either math or science, as they are entered to the last, second to last question, sorry. And another correlation we saw of this, of the same population, of the same category of students who wanted midterms replaced with projects, that percentage was notably higher in upperclassmen, with almost fifty percent of juniors and seniors believing that midterm exams should be replaced with projects, whereas under twenty percent of freshmen and sophores believe the same. It'd be interesting to consider the possibility of differing midterm policies between different course levels in light of the nuanced and a bit more complicated data that we're seeing here.
So, we also wanted to provide, to provide brief updates on other things happening within the school. Having received the support of the PHS administration, we are hoping to organize the assembly regarding multiple paths of success with an alumni panel before the school year ends. We are also in the process of meeting with a group of students to figure out what kind of post-high school options that they would most like to see covered, as well as the kinds of questions that they would like to see answered during the assembly. We really appreciate your support and ideas in moving this idea along. And another point I'd like to touch on is just, I participated in a student focus group regarding, with the architects regarding the referendum, and we were able to discuss the ways in which the learning experience environment can be approved alongside the physical changes that are happening. So, it's just really great to see that there are so many avenues to include student feedback within the referendum. And then, to reiterate what has already been said regarding the Parkland tragedy, we just wanted to bring up the PHS walkout to protest gun violence, which is scheduled for Wednesday, March fourteenth, from 10:00 a.m. till 10:17 a.m., which is in tandem with those happening around the country. So, many students have communicated their desire to participate, and we would like to, once again, emphasize that we hope that the school administration would allow and support, support students in participating in this nonviolent protest. Finally, we're incredibly excited for the upcoming Meet the Board event on March seventh and have encouraged students to attend. So, we'll see you then. Thank you.
One comment. I was in the school today, your signs are way too small. They're like, yeah, they're like this big.
It was a bit of an interesting, how we say it? So, I put them out on the printer, printer gave them out small, and there was already like thirty-ish seat sheets in, so I thought, well, there's not much we could do about that one at this point.
So, one quick thought, it was funny, you were talking about the stressful classes, and it just, I see myself being there, because science and math were what I always, in college, would just, couldn't sleep, because it was so hard and it was always so stressful, and the other stuff was almost fun in comparison. So, it doesn't change. You know? It'll be that way in college too, probably, I bet.
It could change.
It could change.
Nothing's stopping, it's been changing. Could change. Okay. So, so next, we'll move on to facilities with Chair Daphne Kendall.
Thanks, Pat.
The facilities committee met yesterday. One of the items we discussed was school security. We met with the chief of police, Nick Sutter, and two lieutenants to discuss ways security can be improved at each of our six schools. One of the options the committee discussed was the implementation of a school resource officer. It was explained that a school resource officer is a plainclothed police person who is armed with a gun. The purpose of an SRO is to protect the school, not police the school. Many neighboring districts, districts, including East Brunswick and South Brunswick, have SROs in their schools. The committee was concerned about having an armed person in the building, but we were advised by the police that because an SRO is a police officer, the law requires that person to be armed with a gun while on duty. This presented a concern to the committee. No decision has been reached, and we will continue this discussion. The committee would like to thank Chief Sutter and his officers for their time, dedication, and partnership with us for the safety of our staff and students. In the meantime, the police department will continue to include schools as part of their daily patrol. In addition to examining the possible role of SROs in our schools, the committee also discussed other ways security will be improved throughout the district as a result of the security audit performed in January. Doors to all buildings will be locked at all times. There will be increased lighting. Cameras will be added to blind spots, and the district is in the process of seeking four security personnel to help monitor the high school. Public announcement systems will be updated, and doors that do not lock will be fixed. Additionally, for the past year, we have been discussing renovations to the entrance of all six of our schools to better protect our staff and students. In connection with our discussion about security, the committee discussed a proposal by CRG to geomap the plans to our schools to an electronic version, so that in the event of an emergency, police will be able to access these plans in real time. This option was presented to us by our insurance carrier, and because we are one of the first school districts piloting this program, the insurance company will pay $2,500 of the costs, leaving a net cost to the district of approximately $10,000. This item is on tonight's agenda and is another way of how we are improving security in our schools. The committee then discussed the referendum plans and the potential acquisition of land. While we hope to have a land purchase finalized by now, we have nothing to report. The district has made several offers to purchase land, and currently, none of our offers have been accepted. Finally, the committee discussed plans to honor Bill Cirillo's contributions to Princeton Public Schools and the Princeton community. Currently, we are proceeding with two projects. The first is to name the school driveway William D. Cirillo Way and incorporate along with a street sign a nearby marker or plaque that would celebrate Bill's life and values. The second option we're pursuing is to enhance the courtyard to be a beautiful reflective space designed to provide children with a quiet place to think and explore. This may include landscape improvements and art, as well as a winding pathway with bricks that incorporate Bill's favorite phrases or the names of Riverside students and families. Some have suggested the courtyard could be Bill's place for big ideas. The committee, the facilities committee is working with an ad hoc committee that Bill Hare is leading, and so, we would ask that any thoughts or suggestions on how we can celebrate Bill Cirillo's contributions to Princeton Public Schools and the community be sent to Bill by March sixth. His address is on the website, but it's williamhare@princetonk12.org. Our goal is to review feedback over the next two weeks and complete the work this spring. The next facilities meeting will be on March 26th at 11:00 a.m. here at Valley Road. In the meantime, we will continue to provide updates to the community about the referendum. Our next community meetings, where we hope to be able to present design renderings and initial cost estimates, will be held March 13th and 14th. Information about those sessions will be sent out shortly. Thanks. But, email? Do you think we'll send down an email?
We'll send down an email to who?
The community? The Princeton...
It's on our annual list. I don't know. We can talk about that.
Yeah. Maybe we should. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Well, before we move on, just as a member of the facilities committee, I would just point out, like that list, we've talked about it a couple of times now in this meeting, but I, personally, I feel that there's a long list of security-related items that we did that make me feel, you know, pretty good about what we're doing. Obviously, we need to strike a balance between safety of our students and an open and welcoming environment for our children, and an environment that is a community in itself and not a TSA checkpoint or, you know, or a prison. It should be something that's opening and welcoming. But, that we've done, a lot of hardening of the buildings and auditing of the weaknesses of the buildings, that we have software that is similar to me, what I, you see in a Mission Impossible movie, where you can really see in real time where people are, is amazing to me. The fact that we have great cooperation relationship with our police department, who, in my personal experience, are there in, literally, under a minute when you, when you need them. All those things are a pretty solid package. And so, I would say that probably even within the facilities committee, there was no consensus that an SRO is really necessary or appropriate at this time, something that we're willing to continue to discuss, but it's certainly not part of that package that we, you know, have, have talked about tonight. So, to the point of the, of the speaker earlier.
Before you move on, I just wanted to thank Lou Goldstein, who is our safety officer, and for all the work you've done to protect our schools.
Yes, thanks, Lou. And also, for the, they're not here tonight, for the Princeton Police Department, for being so responsive, and the other thing that they offered, which we all thought was a great idea, is increased involvement with our, with our student community, just to understand how, what police officers do all day, and to be on a first-name basis with a police officer and understand the way they, you know, that, that they're someone that makes them more approachable is something that we're willing to work on with the police department as well. So, we'll be talking to the police department in the, in the months ahead about strengthening our relationship with them. Okay. Unless anyone else has any questions or comments, let's move on to finance with Bill Hare.
The finance committee met today. Beth, Debbie, Greg, myself, with Stephanie, and Mary Clurman was from the public. These are open meetings usually, so they're, they're worth attending. If you had been there today, you would have seen some interesting numbers that we can't discuss. But, so, we met with Phoenix Advisors, they're related to the bond for the referendum, and we discussed more logistics, like the timing, how it works. And so, we spent some time on, they, they gave some handouts that they then took back. I thought, I'd throw a little bit of tidbits into today's recap. One of the most interesting things that came out of this meeting with them was that this bond will be an online auction. You're going to be online, and people will be bidding for our bonds. We can all go on and watch our bonds being sold. You know, we're talking about, what, having pizza here at 11:00 a.m. the day that they do this?
You should pay your free round pizza.
Oh, you have to, BYOP.
Free pizza, but you have to buy a bond.
It's just, it's just, it's just funny to think that something as big as this is just going to be an online auction that, watching people go for it. So, I thought that was really a fascinating way that these things are done, as opposed to people in a pit waving tickets and stuff. We also reviewed the bills and had a discussion on different items and potential ways to reduce costs. We talked a little bit in depth, maybe about two items, the pharmaceutical costs and the outsourced diagnostic services, and whether there's ways to look at that. We had a, a long, what, far-ranging discussion on all sorts of stuff when it comes to that. We also talked about potential shareable services with other entities and, and things we're doing along those lines. A couple notable bills that I wanted to bring up that show some interesting aspects of our district. So, this is a district where people are taking AP sciences, languages, everything. There were three bills that note, that were notable. One was for the New Jersey State Fencing Championship. Another one was for maple syrup harvesting lecture, and then sheep sharing. I just didn't ever think in Princeton, New Jersey, we would see a bill for sheep sharing. But, at Mercer Park, some of our students were involved in that.
What about a bill for sheep sharing?
Sheep sharing?
For them to go and...
Yes. We weren't paying to shear sheep. Nor llamas. Yes, but with time, on the rooftop garden. So, we also talked about a joint transport plan with the West Windsor District that should be a cost savings, competitive request for proposal for networking service that will be shared with other entities. We started looking at next year's budget. And I'd like to conclude with a cost savings notable with our Gabe Shakni over here, who was explaining about updating about 200 of our Mac laptops to replace the old movable hard drives that spin with solid-state drives at about $100 a drive, and saved probably, what, two or three years on those thousand-dollar laptops. So, that's a significant savings that I personally would thank him for, you know, taking the initiative and making this happen. So, so, thank you, Gabe, and your colleagues who look at cost savings. When I walked in, I mentioned, Gabe, I'd like to bring this up, and he said, you know, when we were talking about this early, we started thinking about other cost savings things. So, maybe next month?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know if anybody else on the committee wants to bring up anything that was from today, but...
Next meeting is March 20...[1796.97]
Well, right now, it's scheduled for March 20th.
March 20th. Okay.
And it is open usually.
Well, the next meeting is actually Tuesday.
That's right. We have a budget workshop on Tuesday, which you might want to mention, open to the public also, where we go through in detail kind of the budget and the concerns about, you know, how we make next year's budget. So...
Bill, if I might, having sat in on the Finance Committee meeting today, but two things that actually struck me. One was the, the number of assumptions that have to go into the Phoenix Advisors determining what the ultimate tax impact will be. And I was impressed with the very conservative approach that they were taking to what interest rates would be, those kinds of things, what the incentives might be coming back to us from the state. So, they, they took a very conservative line. So, that, that'll be helpful as we move forward. And they keep checking their assumptions against current conditions, which is one of the reasons why we're not sharing information right now. And the other, the other thing that stood out to me was their willingness to communicate. So, they were very open to, to meeting with financial experts within our community and talking with them about, about the assumptions and about how, how the numbers would, would impact our community. And they'll also be at any meetings that we may have later on, once we actually know exactly what we're building, to talk with the broader community about the, the impact. So, they were, they were very open to the communication piece.
Good. Okay. Thanks. Any other questions on finance?
I'll just add too on the bonds. It was a very, a very informative meeting today. And I also appreciated how the advisors gave us several, they kind of came up with four or five different ways that they are looking at trying to minimize the tax impact. Because it's, you know, placing a big bond like this is going to be tricky, and they seem to have experience. And they were talking about comparable deals. And they were very creative in their approach in looking in the next, you know, these 30-year bonds and how we would do that and, and ways of trying to reduce the cost to taxpayers, whatever the numbers end up being. We still are at that hypothetical stage, which is why they took the papers back from us, because you have to model something, but obviously, we don't really know yet what we're looking at.
Good. Thanks.
I'm sorry, Pat. One, one more thing. I just wanted to build off of that. I was also very impressed that this is an organization that knows Princeton, has worked with the municipality, knows us, and, and is willing to share their knowledge base. And so, I think that was really impressive as well.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay. So, moving on to Personnel, Chair Debbie Bronfeld.
Hi. So, we met Personnel yesterday, met Monday, February 26th. We also talked about the security audit and things that are going to be done, which everyone's talked about. So, it is in all of our committee meetings. The committee reviewed and approved two job descriptions, manager of curriculum and instruction, PD and assessment, and administrative assistant to the superintendent and alumni relations specialist. The committee discussed several recruitment events taking place in the next few months. The district is looking to increase the number of qualified candidates of color for expected openings for the 2018-2019 school year. The recruitments are the Central Jersey Pride Job Fair, which is held here on 3/15, the Princeton Public School Diversity Job Fair, which will be April 19th. Also, Lou is going down to see some historically black colleges and universities and doing a whole tour to meet with all the schools and get our name out there. And a new one happening is the Puerto Rican Teachers Recruitment Fair in New York City. Many of the teachers from Puerto Rico have come up into New York and, I guess, deciding if they want to stay. But Lou is going to be on the job search for us.
Can I add something to that conversation? That we talked about also, about perhaps doing some networking, Lou, doing some networking with teachers of color that we have already on our staff. So, to try to broaden, again, intentionality around trying to increase the number of teachers of color in our, in our district, because I, I would hope we aspire to a teaching staff that reflects the population in the town. And right now, we don't, we don't have that particularly in our elementary schools, so...
If I can build on that, I think you're, you're right. So, we're focused on proactive recruitment efforts and also retention. So, the, bringing the, we have a Black affinity educators group that's come together, and I think that those kinds of things are really helpful. It's worth noting that as a result of our efforts for this past year of our new hires, of our '84, '85 new hires, 44% of them are outstanding educators of color. 18% are African-American, 18% are Hispanic, and 8% are, are Asian. So, that's, we're, we're moving in the, very much in the right direction and more in line with the, the diversity within our, our community and student body.
Well, and I think related to that is the, you know, the retention efforts relates to the environment, which the speaker earlier spoke about in our schools, and to make sure that our environment is welcoming and one that makes people feel safe and that they want to continue working in. And so, just a plug for the equity, our equity audit results may come out in the next month or so. And so, we'll be continuing those discussions as we get the data on that. So...
Keep going, sorry.
So, sorry.
We had some open jobs. The committee discussed a rewrite of the bilingual parent liaison job. The committee will discuss further various options for Princeton Public Schools for the math supervisor position. And we also discussed having a central register position in 2018-19 to ensure all students are properly domiciled and that we have all the right paperwork. Our next meeting is Monday, March 19th in Valley Road at 8:45, but it's closed, so you can't come.
Okay. Thanks, Debbie. Next is policy with Chair Greg Stankiewicz.
Thank you, Pat. I just wanted to just reiterate my thanks to the old Policy Committee that did such great work last year and, and thank them and thank the board for your patience as the new policy board starts going through some of the outstanding issues. And some of that will be on the, the agenda, are on the agenda for tonight, and we'll be discussing that later on. But I just wanted to thank Jess, Michelle, and, you know, Beth for working very, very hard, and we're working our way through some important topics. So, tonight, we'll have about half of the bylaws that are up for second reading will be up for voting for the full board. We look forward to that, and we're going to look to try to finish off the rest of the bylaws next month. We also have an issue that was up for second reading, and we'll be discussing that. We've modified it using the language that was, was in it, but we modified it, and we're going to ask to put it up for a first reading to move the issue along. And we'll, we'll continue to work to not only go through that, but our goal this, this year is, as I think many of you remember, we're moving to a different set of policies. And so, we're reviewing all policies over the next six months or so. And I just want to thank the, the committee for that. It's, it's a lot of work, but it's important. And I think any organization should review all their policies anyway and on a, on a regular basis. And so, this is sort of a way for us to, to really delve into that. And we'll be reporting that over the next few months. We met twice since the last board meeting. We are going to be meeting again Friday, March 16th. The committee starts work at 8:45, but we hold our open public session starting at 10:15 to 10:45. We really appreciated the input we had over the last two meetings, and we really appreciate, you know, your, your continued involvement as we move forward. Thanks.
Good. Thanks, Greg. Any questions?
I have a comment about our policies. Now the time to talk about it, or should I wait? Now's the time?
Well, this is committees. So, you can wait till the policies.
Yeah. I'll wait.
Till policies. Okay. Okay. So, then moving on to Student Achievement with Chair Betsy Cabot-Baglio.
Good evening. The Student Achievement Committee met twice since the last board meeting on Monday, January 29th and Friday, February 23rd at 11:30 here in this room. Minutes from December and January were approved. Mickey Chris-Fully came to Student Achievement to give an update on special education, and we're very grateful for her time and being there. She spoke about a number of, a number of topics, actually, that were addressed in the special education PTO presentation, many of those. One item we discussed was the impact of the new high school supervisor of special education that, and that position will begin in March. And Mrs. Chris-Fully described how those responsibilities will be now shared among elementary, middle school, and high school supervisors, and that a benefit to having an additional special education supervisor at every level is that there'll be more professional development in the area of special education to all teachers, including content area teachers. And the Student Achievement Committee was very happy to hear that. In addition, in order to inform future professional development, the department's conducting a survey of all staff, of their knowledge of specific special education topics, and that will certainly inform professional development. So, the committee is appreciative, as I said to Mrs. Chris-Fully, and we invite her to come to Student Achievement as often as you are able. Tim Charleston, the K-8 supervisor of social studies and global education, attended Student Achievement to update us on a number of things. The social studies review conducted last year led to more refined and improved practices and methods. At the middle school, for example, it resulted in tightening and readdressing units on African-American history and units on the Holocaust. He also updated us on the changes to the, the major changes to the third grade social studies curriculum. The third grade has been learning, as one of their units, Princeton history since 1985, but that was really a deep dive into 1787, since 1985. And it was a deep dive into 1787 Princeton history, really told from one perspective. So, the new study looks at the colonial era and also through the use of primary sources and told from multiple perspectives. So, the district would like to publicly thank the Princeton Historical Society for their pro bono work that they have done in collecting primary sources and distributing handbooks of sources to our third grade teachers. And we'd also like to thank Shirley Satterfield. Our third grade teachers took a tour with her as a better way to equip them to teach from multiple perspectives. So, this is really very exciting work in the area of social studies. He also discussed our new elementary social studies curriculum that's been implemented, as well as some middle school field trips. The sixth grade, the sixth grade just went on a new trip to the Franklin Institute, and JW staff and administrators are working to identify a seventh grade trip for prior to the end of the school year. We've discussed the 2018-19 calendar at great length at both meetings, multiple times. It is presented to the board for a vote this evening. We discussed Election Day specifically and the Lunar New Year. We have, we'd like to see a version of this calendar at some point be updated with homework-free holidays on the same calendar, so that's easily accessible to all. And also, another suggestion is there could be some days when school is in session, but all after-school activities are canceled to allow for some celebrations or other, other activities that are happening even when school is in session. So, we'd like to consider that for the future. We, we thank Jason Burr, Priscilla Russell, Annie Kosick, and all the JW French teachers for working together to present a revised eighth grade trip to Quebec. It is on tonight's agenda. It's happening Memorial Day weekend. It includes a school visit this time and a hotel stay, and we're really looking forward to hearing how the trip goes. Mr. Burr is also attending the trip. That, along with another overnight trip, is on the agenda. Annie shared an elementary field trip update with the committee. We have at least one common field trip happening at every grade level this year at our elementary schools. That means there'll be a shared activity, a shared trip, not necessarily the same day, but for example, all fourth graders will enjoy one trip in common, and that sort of ensures some equity that when we get to JW, we've had, the students have had a similar experience. Starting next year, there will be two common field trips during the school year. Amy attended our meeting and spoke on a number of topics, but she also shared some of the midterm and exam data that she and Brian collected. So, thank you both for, for doing that. Joanne Kraus attended Student Achievement to give an update on the math curriculum review. There's been a lot going on. I'm almost done. We are thankful to the nearly 100 parents who've responded, who want to be part of the focus groups in the math curriculum review. Six states have been offered to accommodate all the parents who are interested in attending, and we thank them. We discussed a draft of a parent survey that will go out to all parents so that your voice is heard as well. Ms. Kraus and the committee discussed middle school math courses and graduation requirements, as well as alternatives to the current math sequence in our district. Multiple options were shared, and Ms. Kraus will return this spring with an update. We also discussed with Brian Dubinsky and Stephanie Kennedy, a process for approving new sports in our district. So, generally, the process will be, that's, and this is the process that has been, that's, teams will document student interest over three years. And that will be a pay-to-play program for those three years, with the district covering the cost for students who cannot afford the fees. More information on that to come from the Equity Committee. Coaches during that time would be volunteers, but other costs would be covered by the families. Once there's demonstrated interest for three years, the district would assume financial responsibility as long as district funds are available and the superintendent and the Student Achievement Committee approve the request. Finally, Jason Burr attended Student Achievement again in February to share plans for an upcoming JW advisory pilot program that will be starting next month. It will start with sixth and seventh graders this year, and it will be a whole school program during the next school year. We also would like to express our appreciation to the Crossroads South Principal in South Brunswick. I'm not sure of the woman's name, but she's been very generous with her information and her time. They have adopted a similar program there, and our staff has learned a great deal from that. So, it's a really exciting time for JW. The next meeting will be Friday, March 9th at 11:30, and the public is invited and encouraged to attend.
Sure.
Is there any cost associated with the Quebec trip?
There is.
Okay.
There is. Families will pay, but students who are unable to pay are not being excluded from the trip.
Do you know how much it is?
I...
Right now, it's $734, and I think if five more kids...
A parent of the...
A parent, I have an eighth grader, and I just signed up yesterday. $734, but depending on how many children go, it will go down to $699. I have to tell you, Priscilla Russell has been very proactive in advocating for children who might not have the means to go on these trips. And I wish we had all the money to give her. There are other options that we can pursue, but Priscilla's made this a priority.
Okay. And my second question is about curriculum and asking about the Amistad curriculum and whether or not it's present in our, in our schools?
I believe at the JW, Annie may be able to speak to that.
It is in our curriculum, six to 12. It's written into the curriculum. I could give you a list of the actual courses, where it is. And K-5, it is in all of the curriculum, curriculum as a resource. One of the things we'll be doing this summer is to write it explicitly into the K-5 curriculum.
Okay. Great. Thanks very much. And my last question is, can we have a curling team?
Yeah.
It does. Maybe you get bored a bit.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks, Betsy. And so, now, the Chair of our Ad hoc Revenue, Alternative Revenue Committee, Daphne Kendall's going to give a report. Are you going to give a report?
Yeah. I'm going to give a report. I'm glad I have something to report. So, earlier this month, representatives of the committee met with representatives from the Institute for Advanced Study to request an annual voluntary contribution to the district's operating budget to alleviate some of the burden on Princeton taxpayers. The Institute currently sends 30 children to our schools. The committee believes our public schools provide tremendous education to the children of visiting scholars, and we shared this sentiment with the Institute representatives. We explored some additional ways the Institute could help alleviate some of the financial burden on our schools. It was a very pleasant and honest conversation, and the representatives from the Institute committed to letting us know what contribution, if any, they would be able to make prior to the approval of our 2018-19 budget in early April. The committee would like to thank the Institute for their time and concern for the district's budgetary constraints.
Good. Thank you, Daphne. And last, the, our Ad hoc Equity Committee and Betsy Cabot-Baglio.
We, it was, it's great. We, we've started our work, we met on Thursday, February 1st, here in this room. The board members, district administrators, and members of the public who were here worked together to further refine the work of this committee. And we decided we'd look at district programs in categories. We'll start with world languages, athletics, the arts, and we'll look by age group. But our committee will seek to understand the cost to families that are associated within the, within the program of our public schools. So, just as a reminder, the work of our committee, we hope, will lead to the following outcomes. One is a development of a true per pupil cost for every trip, sport, or activity, including hidden costs or costs such as the cost of a passport that may not be, you know, associated with the cost of a trip. An index of both an in-district and out-of-district funding, list of funding sources that could contribute to such costs. Very clear communication regarding how these funding sources can be accessed by our parents and students. And policy recommendations regarding a process for fair allocation of the Equity Fund after the eighth grade trip to DC is funded, and clarification of other district policies as needed. So, we meet again on March 1st. So we meet again on March 1st, this Thursday, at 9:30 here in this room. We welcome the public. It will be one more organizational meeting to determine how our data will be submitted to the committee and to finalize topics of upcoming meetings, and then we, after spring break, will start with world languages, our first topic. Thank you.
Can I just, I, I'm sure we've talked about this before, Betsy, but one thing, as you think about equity and costs of things, one question I've always had is just getting back to the user interface idea, but, you know, how do you know who needs the help? Like, it would be one thing to ask a child to come to the front of the room and, you know, ask for help. Another thing to do it very much behind the scenes, remember the child doesn't even know that, that he or she is getting help. And so I think we need to come up with a protocol through all this, that for the people who need assistance, to do it in a way that's, you know, that's respectful and not humiliating to, to, certainly to the child, but not to the family either.
Absolutely. And we are, we're very thankful that we're, we're, we're going to ask two high school students, actually, to be on this committee, and I'm not sure if we've reached out to them yet, so I hope, I'm very hopeful that, that they'll say yes, but I think getting their perspective as well, and also staff members who work with these students, thinking to sort of how the process works at each school is something we're going to look at, because it's different school to school. But I think your, your thought, Pat, is exactly our goal, that we want to make this easy for people, and, and certainly not an embarrassing in any way.
Right. And just to comment, there's some wonderful, like Guidance Counselors teachers that know who needs assistance, and, and they're very good at reaching out, and, and the kids are very comfortable with several of these teachers.
Oh, I'm sure. And I think we just need to make it consistent, make sure it's consistent.
No, I agree. I agree, yes.
So that we, there's a protocol for how it's done and how it's not done, right? So, you know, so all that. I'm sure you'll be looking into that. Okay. Unless there's any other questions or comments on the Board Committee reports, we'll move to Item J, which is our public forum on agenda items. And so, again, this is a time for members of the public who are still with us to, to come to the microphone and talk about items that are, that are on the agenda tonight.
Rod Montgomery from William Patterson Court. I notice on the agenda, on the personnel actions, 18 members of the faculty are designated as members of the Technical Steer, Technology Steering Committee. I wonder whether the charter or terms of reference of that committee will be available to the public. I hope that the designation of members of this committee indicates progress towards forming a coherent district strategy for using technology to support your learning. Thank you.
And that is exactly the charge of the committee, Mr. Montgomery. Develop a three-year technology plan.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so we're going to move on then to some of the, many of these items are consent items, and so we'll move through them relatively quickly unless there's questions or comments on them. There are a few tonight, because they're so large in, in amount, especially with, on some of the finance resolutions, if they're over 100,000, we decided to have a vote on those specifically, so it won't move as, maybe quite as smoothly as it sometimes does. But at any rate, we're going to sort of move through this and have just one vote on most of these items, which are consent items in nature. So, starting with Item K, and do we need a motion for each item, Ms. Kennedy, in this part of the meeting, or are we just going to do one consent at the end that...
We'll do one consent.
Okay, so we don't need a motion.
Just read each item and then you do the consent.
But so, let's have a discussion. First of all, Item K-1, the first reading of the, of the bias-related and hate-motivated incidents. If there's any questions, comments, or statements that anyone wants to make on that, do you want to start? Whoever wants to start, go ahead.
I'll start, just, just to give a very brief background. I think every member of the board has taken, has, has seen a copy of this. Item K-1 is, is the original language of a policy that had been put up for first reading last year, and it's on bias-related and hate-motivated incidents. The Policy Committee this year discussed this for a very long time. We listened to input from the committee and from, from people who, who came to the committee meetings. This is basically a statement that, that the board has already seen before and voted on before, and it's a statement of the way the board and the district feels about incidents that tear at the fabric of our community. We thought that this statement in and of itself was important enough to highlight. We also heard from members of, of our community who questioned and asked us to take a step back in terms of some of the specific actions that, that had been proposed before, and asked us to continue to work with them, but also, the committee itself felt that this was a good opportunity to look at all the data that has been, going to be coming into the district and the board over the next few months, from the, from the Equity Audit, from the Diversity Council's work, from the Ad Hoc Equity Committee's work, from, from our students, who are going to be working on, on aspects of what makes our community strong, and what we can do to work together to, to protect that, and from, from teachers and staff. And I think one of the models that we were very impressed, that our superintendent pointed out to us, was the type of work that's done by Alameda Unified School District that is not just proposals, not just resolutions, but also resources behind it and training, and it's a very unified, comprehensive effort. And so I think the, the Policy Committee wants to work towards that sort of unified, comprehensive effort, and we think that this statement is really important as a statement of how we all feel, and as a way of pointing us in that direction and showing everybody our resolve to work towards that.
Okay. So with regard to the hate-motivated behavior policy, pleased to see a policy on the agenda for first reading that asserts that the board will not tolerate hate-motivated behavior. Coincidentally, the Anti-Defamation League today issued its annual report that indicated the number of reported anti-Semitic incidents in the United States, this is their word, surged 57% in 2017. For the first time in at least a decade, the ADL reported that incidents were reported in all 50 states. And, and again, this is the ADL wording, unusually, K-12 schools had more reports than any other location. Typically, public areas have the most. Incidents at K-12 schools nearly doubled. Those on college campuses also increased. The ADL pointed to three likely factors for the increase: the increasingly divisive state of American politics, the emboldening of extremists, and the effects of social media. So I think, in light of the current political environment and the increase in bias-related incidents, it's more important than ever for this board to have a policy that condemns incidents of bias in our schools.
So in looking at this, I guess I was struggling, because this isn't a policy, it's just like a comment, and of course, none of this is going to be tolerated, and I, I was looking for more kind of reaction. I was really affected by what happened at JW last year when they went to DC, and I don't feel this is strong enough in, in telling people, you know, that things aren't right. I, I just, and that's me personally. I just feel we are not kind of, you know, there's, there's no, there's, there's nothing wrong when you do these things. It kind of just goes on and on, and I, so I was, I'm not really sure how this is a policy, and I think that's what I was looking up, because I looked up the word "policy", and I was like, that's not even what this is, so. I know it's a first reading, it's just, it doesn't really support where I would want to be with some of this. I know you guys have done a lot of work, and I haven't been in the meetings, but I just wanted to share my opinion.
Any other comments?
Yeah, maybe, it almost seems like it's missing a last sentence. You know, it says, "It ends with 'shall not be tolerated,' period," but then what? Maybe that's what you could work on.
That's the $64,000 question.
So I shouldn't feel like a genius that I figured that one out? But, but it just seems like, yes, 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 and the last sentence has yet to be written.
That's correct.
That could be true. I, I think that we had something that was a lot longer. In fact, we have another policy that is a lot longer. And one of the things that, that we struggle with, and you're absolutely right, is making sure that we're writing policies. And, and so, I think this is a work in progress. I, I think that it's, it's very difficult for us to prescribe or specifically say, "This is what we're going to do." I think a policy is supposed to guide us and state our intent. So, this is sort of, I mean, this is like everything but the kitchen sink that, that we've, that we've put in here, and maybe it, maybe we should take another look at it, and, and we've worked really hard on it, but I think it's important enough for us as a committee to go back at it again. We were hopeful that we would get something to you tonight, but if it's not, it probably isn't where it needs to be, and I know, I feel pretty confident that we're, we're very willing to go back and hammer at it until we come up with something that is meaningful, that provides guidance, and that's clear to everybody who reads it, who knows what it is we're about, and what's, what one of our core values is as, as a board.
But if you're talking about policy, you don't want to confuse policy and procedure, and you also, this is almost a resolution, what you've put together, and I would really, really support the board's conviction here, and I'm just not sure where to place it. So I want to keep working, but I'm not sure that it is a policy. It might be a resolution, though, even the way it's written, and it might, can, it might be more strongly placed as a resolution that this board will not tolerate. So I'm not really, I'm not really sure, I, I think we have, have to have a very strong interpretation of policy versus procedure. I, I do like and accept this much better than what we had before.
We had a, we had a policy for first reading, but...
First reading. Well, well, no, we did. So I, so I do like this much better. I think it's more aligned with policy, but I do think this board is really searching to affirm and to tell the public and to, to unite ourselves, to say, "This is something we really do believe in, we really stand behind, and we really want to make a statement behind it." So, not really sure how we do that, but I think this is, this is a good, a starting point.
I mean, I guess I would like to say, I think the reason it's, that it's important that it's policy is, after serving two years on the Policy Committee, I kind of feel like policies are the constitution of our schools. And so, right now, our constitution, which is made up of hundreds of policies, 300, I don't know, 350, there is not one policy that says we will not tolerate, tolerate hate-motivated behavior. And the policy that we had before, we worked with the New Jersey School Board Association, we ran it by our attorney, lots of time went into it. I'm fine that it has to be changed, but for me, it has to be part of our fabric, and that's why I think it has to be a policy.
I, I guess I agree with all you, that there's a fine line between, you know, policy and procedure, policy and regulation. You don't want to go too far into over-prescribing what happens next, but I, I agree with you, Bill, that it seems like it needs a little bit more about what happens next. And I don't know, Steve, I mean, in terms of, you know, we've talked a lot about these concepts of restorative justice, for one thing. We've also heard from students and others about the sort of what-about, you know, the whatabouts. Well, what about this thing? You did this for this one, but you didn't do that for that one, and why didn't you do the same for this one as that one? And so, I think there does need to be, for administrators and principals and others, some sort of guidelines that says, "Well, I did the things, you know, I didn't do nothing. I did exactly what was prescribed, and I had some, yet, I had flexibility in within there to tailor a just result for, for the circumstances." So it's, it's hard, I know it's hard to craft, and, and I guess the last thing, and I'm not sure it belongs in here either, but the, the thing that our speaker, or one of our public speakers spoke about earlier is, how do we make sure that, and this is about hate-motivated behavior, but how do we get it, how do we make sure we're hearing what's happening? How is it reported up? Not just like what, when it hap, when we find out about it, what do we do? But how do we make sure we know what's going on out there, and that we have some sort of protocol for bringing things in and collecting all of that? I don't know if it belongs in this policy or not, maybe it doesn't, but, but those are all questions I think we need to, it's great to have a policy that says, "Oh, we're all against, 10 of us are against this," but then, from a, you know, a child in the, in the system, it doesn't make any difference, you know? So it's got, it's, there's got to be some connection there. Just a bunch of thoughts, sorry, but...
Also, there needs to be a connection to the codes of conduct at our schools, right? Language about this has to go into those documents as well. So I think having this as a policy is a first, important step to sort of making sure that it does get to the point that our students and our staff and our, our families see it as well.
Oh, I think we all agree there should be a policy. I don't think there's any question about that. It's just, how specific should our policy be, and what, should it have teeth? Should it have procedures? Should it have something that makes it meaningful to the life of an ordinary kid going to school every day? And, and a teacher and a minister, other people working in, in our system, so...
Well, but also to the values, right? Our mission statement, I'm going to abridge it, Steve, no offense, is to raise children who are going to leave, global citizens, who will leave lives of joy and purpose. And, you know, parents have said to me, "Now is the time they have to learn." And so, I feel it's very strong, I feel very strongly that this is something that we need to address.
Oh, absolutely. I think we all agree with that. But anyway, so if this is a first reading, maybe you can go back and take all these comments in, and we're kind of second.
Well, I was just going to just say one thing, that what, everything we heard tonight is what we've heard as well, and the intent of the Policy Committee is that this is a first step. This is not that we're stopping with this, that we're actually continuing, and we've heard wonderful sort of feedback about different ways, and you're right. The question is not, you know, policy's important, so are procedures. We had some great ideas from, from the public, talking about the importance of honor codes, for example, looking at best practices from all across the country, but also leveraging all the things that we heard tonight about, that people are working so hard around this table and, and throughout our community. So I, I think I speak for, on behalf of the entire Policy Committee, that we see this as just the first step. We did want to put that value, value statement out there, because all of us felt so...
When the calendar with the homework-free weekends and activity-free nights would be released?
I typically do that the very beginning of the school year, but there's no reason that I couldn't, I mean, the dates are pretty much around the same times each year, so I could certainly do that earlier.
And do we know for the high school, and this, you may have already communicated to Cranberry, if the, if Wednesday will be a short...
Yes, I did communicate that to the high school. It will not be an early release day, as it has been in the past. It will be, the students will be getting out at 3:21, five days a week.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the calendar? Okay, so I think we have our voting up. Are we ready?
We are now.
Okay. So, again, typically, we'll try and do all of our consent items at once and then discuss them, just ask if there's any questions on any of them. This agenda's a little bit odd in that we've got M2 here, which is a relatively small equipment purchase, and then three and four, which are pretty major purchases, so we're going to do a vote on three and four. Maybe do it a little out of order, is that, would that make sense? Okay.
That's fine, but we have to do them each individually.
But we didn't, we need a motion for, for M3. Greg, in a second. And now, any questions or comments on M3? Same, are you okay now?
I'm still waiting.
Okay. Okay. All right. Same, I need a motion, a second on M4. Jess, in second. Debbie? Right?
Good.
Okay. So now, any other questions on any other item M, agenda item? If not, we're going to have one vote at the end. And here, hearing none, we'll move on to item N.
Which has no actions.
No actions. Any questions or comments on any item within the N agenda item? Okay. All right.
One in section O.
And in section O, we have, well, first of all, in section, well, maybe we start with the vote and we'll go back to any other items. So we have a vote on O8, which is, again, a large purchase of school bus, school buses. So I need a motion and a second for that. Motion, Beth, and second, Greg. Any questions or comments?
It's great, thank you. For the public who can't see it, we're going to be purchasing two buses.
Yep.
And we're going to save $100,000 a year by bringing routes in-house. So that's great.
There's another one of Bill's.
Savings.
Wins, monthly wins.
Yeah. Innovative savings.
Okay. And are we done there?
Not yet.
Okay. Just on O2, I'd like to thank the Community Park PTO for their donation of over $3,000 to purchase some iPads for the students at Community Park. So we thank all the PTOs for all their work, but especially this month, Community Park PTO for their generous donation. Any other questions or comments on any O items on the agenda? Okay.
One under new business.
Well, right. And so, but that's a, that's a real vote, right? We're going to do that as a vote? So what?
I thought you wanted.
Yes. So can we do our consent, then, which is item P, which is our consent vote on all the consent items on the agenda? Sorry, first and a second. Beth, in second. Jess? Okay. And then under, oh, sorry. All right. And now on item Q, new business, is where we placed, I mentioned when we gave that statement, it seems about 24 hours ago, on gun violence in the schools. And we've all had a chance to look at it, but we thought it would give extra power and gravity to what we're saying if we voted on it. And you all had a chance to ratify that, so we have it as a vote item on the agenda at item P. So need a first and a second? Sorry, I mean, first.
Well, okay, I'll first it, absolutely.
Bill? Okay, yeah.
Okay, sorry. I just wanted to thank you, Pat, for this brave statement. And just very briefly, I just wanted to say, if we could add one more assembly person onto the list, Assemblyman Freeman. And thank you as well to send it out to the NJ SBA, which is leading this effort to put this, all this together so they can have even more impact. It's our voices, along with other school boards across the state. So thanks.
Greg, was that Freeman?
Roy Freeman.
F R.
It could be Freeman.
We'll revise it and make sure that he gets it. Yeah. Thank you, Greg. Appreciate that. Any other comments and comments on this statement? Okay, then we're up for a vote?
Okay, there you go.
All right. Okay. And then finally, this is our item R, our last public comment session. If anyone has any questions or comments based on what they heard in the meeting tonight, now's the time to come to the podium. And if no one, oh, okay, we've got to take her, great. If you just state your name and.
My name is Cal Benney. I'm a sophomore at Princeton High School. Unfortunately, I missed last meeting due to a cold, but I did hear through the news that spread through the halls of PHS like wildfire, that the schedule had been pushed back by half an hour from 7:50 to 8:20. I believe I speak for a great majority of students when I say thank you. This, the Stanford Success Survey that students took last year as well as this year before the winter break, gave us a better understanding of the problems we were dealing with, with student wellness at the high school. And I can't speak for your decisions, but it seems like this was a decision that was made partly in response to what was seen in the survey. And I wanted to say, this is a great example of how school boards should move forward when coming up with solutions and policies to help address the issue of student wellness. It meets, in my opinion, the two most important criteria. One, directly helps the students. And two, makes the students feel like they're being helped. This did help the students, and students felt like, it gave them a feeling that actually the problem of not being able to get enough sleep and finishing all their homework was actually achievable through such policy changes. In contrast, for example, the 12-minute AM break that was implemented last year, this is just, for example, what did not meet either of these criteria. They didn't really serve to help students very much, because honestly, if you told a student there's 12 minutes extra in the schedule, they would tell you to put it at break or start school even later. And so it didn't make students also feel like they were being helped. It made them feel like they were just being told to not do anything for 12 minutes. I mean, imagine if we were doing one of these board meetings and halfway through, we just said, everyone just stop, just 10 minutes, take a break, and we'll just pick up right where we left off. As we go about these changes to address this rising problem of student wellness, that's the, I think that that's the kind of consideration we should take into, just taking into thought when making these policy changes. How does it help the students and how does it make them feel like they're being helped? You know, they are, Princeton High School students are children, so maybe they can't see the direct, the direct way that these changes help the students, but they should, there should at least be a consideration to, what is the student reaction going to be? And I think we could all guess that when you told them that school's starting half an hour later, they were going to be relatively good. And it was. But what we have to take into consideration is that what we need is not pen to paper, written lines of just strict policies that change, because no one policy and no set of five sentences changing something works for all 1,600 students. Even the schedule pushback didn't work for students who have consistent commitments after school, like crew or tutoring. It still, this still didn't work for everyone. What we need is a versatile and flexible way of, one, collecting information from students on how to, on their problems and how to better solve them. And two, a direct way to help them that can be changed based on the student it helps, because people struggle with different things. Student who is very active needs a chance to go outside, so they need help starting a school sport. Or a student who actually has the potential to take lots of AP classes and lots of harder courses, just needs help with planning and time management. And we need a group of people or committee to solve these problems. The question is, who would do this? The good news is, it already exists. The PHS Guidance Department is, in my opinion, the most untapped and most valuable resource the school district has in challenging and tackling this issue of mental health that continues to become a problem at the high school. There are seven guidance counselors in the Guidance Department, signed to just under 1,600 students at the high school. In theory, as recommended to us by our dean of students, Ms. Lagus, students should check in with their guidance counselor once every two weeks or so to make sure they're not missing anything. For example, if you're a sophomore, make sure you have community service, you're registered for APs, everything. In practice, because guidance counselors have to deal with over 200 students each, students will very rarely check in with their guidance counselor. They'll come in maybe once at the beginning of the year to drop a class or change something, and will, in some cases, won't even remember their guidance counselor's name. Speaking on my personal experience with my guidance counselor, it is incredible to know that there's someone in the school that is not a teacher, so doesn't actually have a tie to your direct grades, and still is there just to help you with all the problems you deal with in high school. With my guidance counselor, just as much as we talk about grades and scheduling, we also talk about football and how bad the Browns are. The personal relationship that a student could build with their guidance counselors not only would help guidance counselors and the administration gain a better understanding of the actual problems that are, that students are facing, but would also help the students because they would realize that there's, that they can talk about this. And I think we can all agree that just talking about a problem can often lead to direct ways to solving it. This, and if we could, so if we increase the actual size of the Guidance Department and the number of guidance counselors, and we could increase their role in the students' lives in the school, we could better equip our guidance counselors and our students to deal with the problems they're facing by saying, each guidance counselor has to meet with their student once a month and discuss what's going on. And these are the things you shouldn't discuss, not just what classes you want to switch, not just how your schedule's working out, but actually, you know, what's going on in your life? How is, how are you managing school? What are you doing after school? Take me through a day in the life of you. That would really help students realize that I'm not just here, I'm not just one in 300, one in 1,600 students trying to go through school and just figuring out which classes I need to take. I'm really valued in this school. And that is just one potential idea to a vast problem that I'm sure many people have given a great deal of thought into. And I think that if we continue to think about how students will perceive certain policies and solutions and how they will actually help them, we can effectively work against the culture at the high school of academic excellence and academic excellence and not, and just focusing on grades and not actually taking care of yourself. So, and other, I know there was other discussions had during the board meeting. On the topic, and I know it was moved past, but of voting in the schools, I can remember very vividly, as a 10-year-old fourth grader, my mom taking me to actually vote at my elementary school. And I was asking her, why do people vote? She said, well, everyone, and she explained to me the whole idea behind voting. And I think one of the most invigorating experiences of the 10th year of my life was pressing the button to vote for my local congressman, whose name I didn't even know. And it helped, it helped me, and it helps a bunch of students realize that, you know, when you're an adult, you help make the decisions in your life. Because when you're a kid, especially in elementary schools, you don't really have that feeling yet. And the idea that, like, teaching kids with the very foundation of democracy we're talking about is crucial, and it's part of the reason I would say I'm standing up here today, that I was taught, that you have a voice and you have a chance to change what you want. And the argument was made that, one, students don't get recess when there's voting. It's actually hit home for me, because in middle school, if it's cold outside, students don't get recess. So if you really want to tackle all the ish places where students aren't getting outside and are being taken care of because of things, three days in the school year because of voting is not the biggest, is not the biggest bite out of students' exercise. The argument's also made that we don't want people in our buildings when students aren't there. I think that's a very general statement that doesn't really, that if we actually lived by that, we wouldn't really be, we would really be doing our school a disservice because I think some of the greatest lessons I've learned is from when students, when people I don't know come into the school, I mean, because they're invited, but when I talk to them. However, the idea that we need to isolate our students during the day and say that no one can come in, this is our school, even though it's valued as a place of community, you're not allowed in because for some reason you pose an incredible danger threat, even though you are, in fact, our neighbors. So I think that there are, if the problem is security, there are many solutions to security issues that don't result in unilaterally taking voting booths out of schools, because I think that would be detrimental to students who are just learning about what it means to live in a democracy. So thank you.
Thank you, Cal.
Can I just say something about going back to the voting and saying that the people who come to vote are neighbors? Well, in theory, they are. But because we don't know who they are or where they live, it could be anyone. So the point, just as Mr. Benney said, is we don't want to let people in that we don't know. That's our policy, 177 days of the year. We don't let people in we don't know.
Rod Montgomery from William Patterson Court. I'd like to thank Ms. Kennedy and Ms. Sewell and the policy committee for responding so politely to my fulminations about the brokenness of the district's public calendar. The calendar remains broken, as far as I can tell. Concerning Mr. Sullivan's observations about the need, about the scarcity of expertise in user interface design, this is not a new problem. Back in at least the 1980s and perhaps as early as the 60s, Gerald Weinberg observed that if carpenters built buildings the way programmers build software, the first woodpecker who happened by would destroy civilization. There are known guidelines and rules for building user interfaces, but you have to know them and follow them. I'm not impressed by the website and by the administrative procedures that maintain it. I hope that they can be improved to the point where I don't tear my hair out every time I have to interact with the website. Thank you for your attention, and thank you for your hard work for Princeton students.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Any other comments in our last public comment period? Okay. That moves us to item S, which is sort of a public comment period just for the board members. Anyone else have any other questions, comments before we adjourn?
Very quick comment. Amy mentioned it, meet the board. We have our next meet the board event at Princeton High School, based on the input from our, from our high school representatives. I thank them for that. But I really want to make sure our students and our staff are aware of this meet the board opportunity. It's at 3:00 PM next Wednesday, so we hope it's a convenient time for those of you who work in our schools or who attend our schools. We also welcome the rest of the public as well. And that's 3:00 to 4:30, and there will be bagels, thanks to your request. Yes.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
One quick comment. So it's interesting, just reflecting like in the last, I don't know, four...
One, one quick comment, so, it's interesting, just reflecting, like, in the last, I don't know, fourteen months I've been on the board, it's amazing how much, and I hate to say it, but the NRA has influenced what we do. From meetings on facilities last year, talking about renovations of the schools and having to worry about security. Yesterday, the police meeting with them, talking about software packages, so that a first responder can go through all hallways to try to protect our kids, arguing about voting and all that. I mean, maybe this, uh, committee Daphne, you and Greg are doing, maybe y'all could go where you're getting money from outside sources. Maybe you could go to the NRA and ask them to start contributing, because they're taking a lot of, of our money so far, this NRA tax. So maybe they should be the number one to pay up. Good luck.
Thanks, Bill. Any other comments before we adjourn?
Were we just gonna talk about different calendar days, or no?
Oh, for a retreat.
Oh, right, so we.
In the meeting, right.
Right, so, I think, what is the best way, Ms. Kennedy, to do it? I mean, we could do it in a public meeting, but can we circulate some dates that work for, we, we'd like to have, and we've mentioned this a couple of times, is we have a, a board retreat coming up, which is not a public event, but we also wanna have a public meeting that's sort of similar in flavor, right? That's a open agenda.
That's the May ninth.
Which, uh, we're thinking it's gonna be May ninth, but it, it is May ninth, okay. Good, okay. May eighth, okay. So are there any other open meetings that we need to discuss now?
No, we, I had asked the board about the, um.
Moving the, the three twenty date to three twenty-seven.
Ah.
Uh, and it seems like there's a, quite a few people that can't, uh, do that date. We can make the three twenty work, it's just a little bit tougher for me, but that's fine.
Can we do later that week, or do we always stick to Tuesday?
No, that's twen- that's, um.
You can do the twenty-six, that Monday? You wanted to do it here.
Right, well, that's up to the board, but I don't know if the twenty-six works either.
Is March twenty-six for a public board meeting?
As opposed to the twentieth, that was, that's what Debbie is suggesting.
I'm with Elba.
Yeah, that works.
Does that work for March twenty-sixth?
Monday, March twenty-sixth.
Greg? Ca- ca- can't, yes. Okay, so, and Greg, you're okay on the?
Are you?
Okay.
So that would be our monthly?
That would be our monthly board meeting?
Intensive, intensive budget approval.
And why, oh, is it because of the budget approval, is that why you need a little more time?
Right, the state moved the, uh, state of address out, so the state of address won't be until March thirteenth, and state aid that isn't released until two days later. It just gives me a little bit more time.
I see, so it gives you the.
Actually, the twentieth is fine, too, I'll just, I'll make it work, so.
Technically in Boston for ASV.
Oh, so we could just leave it on the twentieth.
Okay, so we'll leave it on the twentieth then, okay. No.
We can just do the, we could just do the twentieth if that works.
We'll just keep it the twentieth.
Just keep it at the twentieth.
Yeah. Yes. Okay, any other, so, any other questions, comments before we move to adjourn?
Pat, I do have one, and I'm sorry for the late hour, but, um, i- the way that we are doing our groupings and we are voting collectively in groups to pass, um, a group of, um, things, we really do, I mean, I know it's painstaking and it, and it, it does expedite our meetings to do it that way. And we are missing things, um, we are missing the possibilities of abstaining. I know there was something that needed to be abstained from tonight, and one of our board members was not allowed to do that. I know that one of our board members was on the finance, uh, report, and she needed to abstain, and she was not able to do that, so.
That's not true. That's not true.
So, so how do we do that when we're, no, 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 I know we can, but we, I know we can, but we're not.
So if it's in a group. Well, multiple things, if, if you know, if you review the agenda ahead of time.
I, I agree, so we, so, so what's our protocol?
So the protocol should be if there.
Do we tell, we need to say ahead of time, which we did in, and we did say that's what we should do, and then we didn't do it, so I don't know how we circumvent that. That's just my point.
So if, if during, so if during the meeting, somebody wants to vote differently, you have to let me know, and then I can go in while, as long as we wait a minute, I can adjust it and make it an action item instead of an action consent.
All right.
Thanks, that was my fault, I actually was supposed to abstain from vote, and I, I forgot that we were, you know, to indicate that. Is, is that okay, or can I change it down?
We could actually even open it up now and change it if you want.
Oh, I, I appreciate that, that'd be great.
Why don't we do that, keep it, keep it clean.
Thanks, everyone, I appreciate that.
All right, so, you're gonna have, we're gonna have to, hold on a second, so I have to go back to, what is it that we're changing?
N three.
I'm sorry.
N, Nancy three.
It's going to give me a little bit of a hiccup because it's, um.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that.
That's interesting. Feel like we did that. Yeah, make it ten. Uh, N three, right, yeah.
All right, so I have to go back to N. Okay, I'm gonna need a first and a second for that motion.
Okay, first and a second, Bill and Debbie for N three.
Debbie?
Yeah.
Okay, now I can take the vote again.
Um. Thank you. Um, Stephanie, can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
Evelyn noted that, um, I am listed, let me just confirm this, for the Gifted and Talented Conference? Am I on that? Where did you see that?
It was on the bills.
I did see it on the bills list. On the bills. Oh, the bills list.
Does she have to abstain from the bills?
Do I abstain for a conference that I attended? Remember school boards, you said if we all vote.
Yeah, it's okay.
Um, but what was it, I wasn't.
No, 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 they were paying for the gift in town.
They're paying for the, yeah, but that, yeah. You know, that's not, that's not, um.
All right.
So I still need a couple votes.
Thank you, Evelyn.
Yeah, thanks, Evelyn. Okay.
Nope. So anytime that somebody wants to do that, I just need to know before we take the vote, the consent vote, so it's, it's not a problem, I just need to know.
I apologize, that was my fault. Thanks again, everyone.
Oh, no, I didn't.
Do you want me to put, make the vote for you? What are you voting?
I saw the first, I saw the first sentence.
Okay, so let's see. Designate save. This one goes away. Okay. This one's save as a final. Okay.
Okay, so unless we have any other questions or comments on item S, then we're on to item T. You can have a motion to adjourn, please, Debbie and second, Jess, and. Do we need to vote electronically?
No, you don't, you can just let me, is, anybody, all in favor?
All in favor? Yeah, okay, thank you, everybody.